Get the meeting started tonight, the August fifteenth Planning Commission meeting. First thing of order is I need a motion from somebody and a second on placing me as chair for the evening.
I make a motion that Commissioner Tretard act as chair this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very well. First thing on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is there any changes that we need to be aware of?
No, there are not.
Very well, that's easy enough. Then we'll move on to the minutes of the July eighteenth Planning Commission meeting.
Motion for the agenda.
Yeah, a motion to approve the...
Oh, yeah, gotta remember that, see?
Right.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice habit, very well, we'll move on to the minutes from the July eighteenth meeting. Does anyone have any questions, changes, anything they'd like to speak about?
We did have the one note before the meeting that one of the commissioners in attendance was left out of the minutes, so we'll have that updated, but would want the motion to reflect the addition of the absent commissioner.
Very well, we will add that to the minutes, that one of the commissioners was not listed as present. We'll make that change. Other than that, is there anything else? Very well, I have none. I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from the July eighteenth meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very well, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, we'll move on to new business, and the new business is the final plat for the meadows of Wasserman Lake. Aaron, Ben?
I'll take it, thank you. Tonight, we do have a final plat for the meadows of Wasserman Lake. We've reviewed the sketch plat on April eighteenth by the Planning Commission and the preliminary plat on June twentieth. A bit of a refresher for where the property is located, the southern border is Marsh Lake Road, it's commonly known as the Hess property, and it's south of Wasserman Lake, so just an aerial of where the project is. And moving forward with an aerial of the eighty-seven lots that are to be considered for final plat, sorry, I'm gonna back up, the seventy-nine lots tonight to be considered for final plat. If you recall, at the last meeting when we considered preliminary plat for the meadows of Wasserman Lake, there was also a final plat for the Wasserman Lake Woods second edition, which was the eight lots on the northernmost portion of the development that had existing services. So those lots were considered for final plat and approved by the city council, so tonight is seventy-nine lots for the final plat. Next, we do have the final plat, the first page shows the outlots that will be deeded to the city, so Outlet A, C, and E. And two is the lot layout, you'll see that the eight have been removed from the northern portion since they've already been approved, so just something to keep in mind, that those have already been through the final plat process. Okay, next we're moving on to the phasing plan for the development, so it is proposed to be completed in two phases, you'll see a dash line that my cursor is following along. So the project will be done in two phases as outlined, I hope everyone could see that line, if you want me to go over it again, I can, otherwise, we'll keep moving forward. Something else that's been provided as part of the final plat and construction drawings are the landscape plans, so as you recall, we've recently updated our landscape and open space ordinance. As part of the final plat, each lot will be required to have three trees installed per lot, and then there's additional buffering that will be along Marsh Lake Road, and then along existing development. Part of this project is the expansion of the Lakeside Estates Park, so it's the addition here with the baseball field with parking, and then there's also some dedication required in fee in lieu of, which will be used to make some improvements to the park. Also, at the time of this development, we were working through our residential chapters, so you'll recall that the developer was pretty active reviewing our R2 standards, so at the time of preliminary plat, the project was rezoned to R2. The two graphics on the screen show the bulk regulations that are proposed for the development, and then the R2 information that was adopted via the city code. So again, this was kind of the first test for our new residential districts, which was exciting to see, that's something that the Planning Commission worked so diligently on to be reflected in a development. The bulk regulations do adhere to the preliminary plat, there are no significant changes from the preliminary plat to final plat, so lot sizes, bulk regulations, all meet the regulations that are stated in our R2 district. So two builders have been identified for the project, Paulty has some images on the screen right now as to what some of the homes could look like, and Country Joe is the second builder, again, with some visuals on the screen as to what construction could look So again, the final plat does adhere to the information that was adopted with the preliminary plat, it meets the R2 regulations, and generally adheres to the information that we've seen throughout the development, both at sketch plat and final plat. So we'll quickly run through the conditions, if there's any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to stop me. The first condition is that the developer will work with the title company, comply with the requirements of the city attorney's plat opinion, so a developer, development agreement. Two, is that the lot shall conform to the city's adopted R2 regulations. Three, is securing permits for all work. Four, final engineered plans and specifications. Five, and, oh, it should be six, five and six fall to the deeding of the outlots to the city that will be used for parkland dedication, as well as stormwater management. Eight, again, outlot deeding to the city. Nine, speaks to the landscape plan that was just reviewed, if you'd like me to go back, feel free to let me know, but generally, three trees per lot, along with significant buffering along Marsh Lake Road, and for existing development. And ten, this was a note from the city council, speaking to a construction access from Marsh Lake Road, as opposed to development that has happened north of the property, just to maintain safety and quality of life for residents that are currently living in those developments. So all construction traffic will come off Marsh Lake Road, and there will be a staging area where the park is proposed, so here is where most of the construction staging material will be, with access coming off Marsh Lake Road. So that's probably the most significant change from the time of preliminary plat, it was a point of direction from the city council, just to maintain the access strictly from Marsh Lake Road. We do have a member of the development team here tonight, if you have specifics about the project, otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, no significant changes from the time of preliminary plat, conform as well to our R2 district, and the staff is comfortable with the final plat.
Very good, thank you, Aaron. Does anyone have any questions or comments or anything we could ask of Aaron at this time, Aaron or Ben?
I have one question, was this development gonna tie in the current development at one point, through the Watlensers, and complete that road to the...
The Lakeside Drive connection is actually part of Lenar's responsibility within the Lake Town ninth edition itself, that connection is still anticipated to potentially be put in yet this fall, so by the time that these homes within the meadows of Wasserman Lake get constructed, we should have that final connection there for residents to use to get to and from the school, or out to County Road eleven.
Excellent, thanks, Ben.
So if we could go back to the temporary construction entrance?
Sure.
Where exactly would that road be as far as those outlots go? If you would look at page C21, or 20, it kind of shows the parking in the ballpark. Where exactly would, because that's, you know, there's a house there, right across the street, that sits pretty level with the road there.
Yep, so there was an existing farm access on the far west side of the parcel, so right next to the Lakeside Estates plat, where the, kind of the southeast corner of the existing park, there was a field road for access to the farm there, that's generally where they'll be using it, so the entrance would generally be just to the west of the garage of the property that you're referencing on the south side of the road.
And I guess, you know, you can see my question headlights, it's becoming winter now, it's dark in the morning, dark at night, when everything's being supplied there, and the trucks going in and out.
Yep, part of what we talked to the developer about, so there is a berm that's supposed to be constructed as the project gets masqueraded, and most of the staging, as well as the contractor parking, would end up getting tucked behind that berm once they get it installed.
Perfect, that's exactly what I was getting at, thank you. And then one other note, I really appreciate, under the conditions on the page four of six, how you added the notes to every condition, that really lessens the questions I have, I can read through that and understand fully that that part has been processed and taken care of, so I appreciate you including those notes along with that. Any other questions or comments?
I just had one comment, I really liked what was worked out with the council in that construction access, that was a big concern of mine on the preliminary plat of all that construction traffic going through those existing neighborhoods, so I think that worked out great.
It's a good feature, and that was the residents that did show up, that was their major concern, so at least they know we're addressing their, and thinking about them when they do come forward, so that's a good point, Jacob. Any other comments or anything, or Aaron, anything you want to add, or Ben? So do we have to have a public hearing to accept this, for this?
No.
Because that part's pretty much done.
There's no public hearing as part of the final plat process, either before the Planning Commission or City Council.
Well, if there's no other questions on this, or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve the final plat of the meadows of Wasserman Lake, resolution number seventeen fourteen?
So move, you already got it already spelled out?
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we approve the resolution number seventeen fourteen, a resolution recommending approval of final plat for the meadows of Wasserman Lake, as submitted by Golden Valley Land Company, with the nine conditions as noted. Very good. Short and sweet.
I think you gotta do this cherry thing more often.
I think we hashed this one pretty good on that prelim, so it was gonna be cut and dry, so, that's good, thank you. Alright, next thing on the agenda is discussion, letter A, chickens in residential districts. Who would like to walk us through that one?
I will be doing it. Thank you. Recently, the city council has been approached by some young members of our community that have been interested in keeping chickens in their backyard as a hobby and as their pets. So at the May eighth, twenty seventeen council meeting, there was a discussion about having chickens in residential districts, we'll go through the information that was presented that night, as well as the directive from the council to begin working through the So through some research, there are many communities around Victoria today that do permit chickens within residential districts, so in those cities include, let's see, Carver, Minnetonka, Shakopee, Maconia, Jordan, and Savage. The communities of Chaska, Eden Prairie, and Chen Hassan currently permit chickens to be within agricultural districts only. That being said, Victoria today does permit chickens in ag districts as well, there aren't many in the city, many are on the outer edges, but today, they are permitted in ag districts. So many of the ordinances of cities that do permit chickens within residential districts speak to similar language, so that includes that roosters are not permitted within residential districts, largely due to noise, and they generally are the more aggressive sex of chickens. The chicken coop must be twenty-five feet from all property lines to deter sounds, smells, any of that from adjacent property owners. Coops and runs must be kept in a sanitary condition, free of vermin, storage of food for chickens must be kept in sealed containers, sale of eggs is not permitted on premise, butchering of the birds is not permitted on premise, and the chickens do need to be enclosed in a coop and run, they are not permitted to be free-range chickens, generally in residential districts that were reviewed. So some interesting facts about chickens. Hens do lay eggs from about six months of age, and they produce until they're three or four, that's when they're producing the most eggs, so they can keep producing into their later years, but those are the years that you're going to get the highest yield for most chickens. On average, a chicken can live to be eight to ten years old, a rooster is not necessary for a hen to lay eggs. Five eggs per week per hen is a typical yield, and hens are social animals, and it's not recommended to keep less than five chickens together. I learned through my research that if you keep two, they get really aggressive towards each other, three can have the same story, so it's good to have a larger number of hens together, which was interesting. And some information about square footage that they need, so most ordinances speak to four square feet of coop space and ten square feet of run space per chicken. Moving into some impacts of having chickens within residential districts, some positive impacts, a big lesson in self-sufficiency, chickens are known to be friendly, and I have learned that people form some pretty strong bonds with their chickens, and it's a good educational tool about agriculture, local food, and responsibility. And of course, there are negative impacts as well, relating to the nuisance of smell and cleanliness, irresponsible owners, increased number of natural predators and vermin, as well as noise, so roosters are the louder of the two, but hens do cluck, which is noise that they would be producing. So at the time that we discussed it with the city council, we looked for initial comments and concerns, the big points that the council had about allowing chickens in residential districts, an increase in predators, largely coyotes, being present in neighborhoods, just because it's sometimes a free meal if the chickens aren't enclosed properly. We were asked to consider a community model, similar to what like a CSA might be for eggs, where you could lease a space and keep your chickens on an agriculturally zoned property, you would go and care for them, but they wouldn't be part of a backyard coop. I have learned that the city of St. Louis has a similar model, there's a few school districts across the country that do have the community model, and Portland, Oregon, which is rather stereotypical of what you would expect, has a large community model for chicken keeping. The city council did advise the Planning Commission and staff to begin working on language and an ordinance, so moving through language that we'd be comfortable adopting, thinking about permitting them, cost, fees, working through some of the nitty-gritty details of what it might look like to allow chickens in residential districts. So if we want to start with initials, comments, concerns, thoughts?
A few questions jump into my mind right away, and deals with predators, I think we don't have to worry about the chickens, I think we have to worry about, you know, pets, dogs and cats, I mean, it's gonna increase, and we'll get some complaints on that. And the second one is who and how would this ordinance be enforced? Is it gonna be reactive, or are we gonna be proactive and get out there and do this? Or, you know, how's that gonna work, and who's gonna do it?
Yeah, I think the way that it's envisioned now is to create an ordinance that allows it to be a by right ordinance in certain districts within the city, so whether that's only R1, R2, whatever those end up being, I think that's part of the direction, we're maybe just looking for a reaction from the commission on for where the appropriate place for those things to be is, knowing that once the ordinance is enacted, it'd really just be upon anyone that's interested in pursuing it, and can abide by whatever those ordinance conditions are, that they would be the ones allowed to implement. So that, as I believe Aaron had noted, it was a group of residents that brought this idea forward, I think they're interested personally, and it was two sisters, other young ladies that had brought forward this idea, that I think they liked the potential of being able to do it in their home, and saw some value in people their age that have kind of a learning lesson, in being able to care for basically food, just different than a garden.
Sure. It's definitely trendy right now, you see it in many cities, even though Eden Prairie says they don't allow it, there's actually many houses in Eden Prairie that house chickens today, you can get your chicken starter kit at Fleet Farm here locally if you wish.
You know, the whole thing with chickens is, they can be pets too, and there's no way of getting around not letting them have a pet, at least if we allowed it, or if we had an ordinance in place, it's a lot easier to control and enforce, as far as cleanliness, you know, the cage and all that. I work in Minnetonka on the list here, and I called Carver, and I talked to people in Maconia at the city, and the number one complaint they get is actually from the chicken owners, that other people's dogs and cats are around more in their yard than any predator. So, that's kind of ironic in a way, but, you know, and it's really the same thing, the ordinance could be set up, it's a responsibility thing, it's just like having a dog, or a cat, or anything else, I mean, it's something you have to keep an eye on, and it's gonna be complaint-based enforcement if there is something, I would imagine, it being. I personally am in favor of this situation, because I want chickens. Yes.
You're gonna have a chicken farmer.
But, I don't see a huge downside unless, like you said, it does get messy, or if there is an issue with predators around, but, because we do have a big park right here, that we, it could be a thing too, but I think heading it off with an ordinance and getting language in place so we can control it is better than saying no, for no reason, so just my thoughts on it.
I totally agree with Todd, it's here, it's coming, it's trendy, it's sustainable.
Something that I have thought about, thinking about predators, is that coyotes are largely nocturnal, so we could have language in the ordinance saying chickens must be locked up from...
Certain hours.
Right, certain hours, so from sundown to sunup, chickens aren't permitted in their run, they need to be secured in their coop, which generally, I think you would do anyways, just because it gets cool at night, and the coops are generally heated, where the run is just free space, so I think we could be proactive with some of those things to prevent some of the large issues we can foresee, there's likely going to be others that will learn through the process, but just thinking proactively about some of those major concerns.
Curfew for chickens.
Yeah, right.
Well, those ordinances already have to be set up, if there's cities that allow, that you could copy and paste.
Yep.
The one question that came to me is the HOA situation, would, because I have an HOA, and, you know, substructures and outstructures and all that stuff is, it's all regulated, so the language would have to account for that too, right? It would have to be approved by the HOA first.
The HOA typically would supersede the city rules and regs, I believe.
Yeah, but it's gotta be accounted for in the language, number one. And number two, we all have opinions on it, so if my neighbor is going to put in a chicken coop, would I be concerned about it? Regardless of how I feel about it personally, some people might be against chickens, so the thing that, and I don't know if this falls into our world or not, but, is that something that should get open to, be open to the public? Just because of the simple fact that we all might want to have chickens, we might want our kids to learn about them, what do our neighbors think, and what's it gonna do to property values and all those types of things? Now, I don't know the answer to any of those questions, but it leads me to believe that maybe it's greater than just setting up the rules and saying so, if you want public opinion on what your neighbor's actually gonna do.
So something interesting that Minneapolis and St. Paul do is that they take the property that's applying for the chicken permit, and within one hundred square feet of the property, eighty percent of the neighbors do need to sign off of having no issue. That's obviously a couple more people, when you're living on small lots in Minneapolis, where here, that doesn't translate to a really large group of people, just because lot sizes are generally a little bit larger. If we do choose to move forward with ordinance adoption, there will be a public hearing through the process, just to have the ordinance adopted, so that could be a place where people, if they have strong concerns, could come forward before the Planning Commission.
Do you know how they handle that circumference approval, for lack of a better term, when there's transition in neighborhoods? If you sign, you only have to sign off on it once, and then you never have to worry about it again?
Sure. I would generally say if you're buying a house next to a property that has chickens, you probably don't have much say about it, since it is existing before you. Like similarly, if you put, on our permit today, if you want to have a fence on your property line, it's required that the shared property line owner does need to sign off, but once that owner changes, the fence remains. Does that make sense?
That's a value add typically to a house, though, if that's...
Sure.
Whereas, depending on what the view of the public would be, or any pet, right? I mean, if I moved next door to a house that has ten aggressive dogs, that would impact the whole neighborhood, so, you know, that's, we're not necessarily talking about something that would increase the value, we're talking about something that could, and I don't know, but could have a negative effect on a neighborhood.
I think a lot of it just depends on how this ordinance ends up getting set up.
That's true.
I mean, there are similar things that depending on your personal position, could be a nuisance to your property, I think of things like, we have provisions in our ordinance now that deal with separation from property line for placement of the pool equipment, so if you put in a pool, and you have some kind of pumps and stuff, they make noise, they've gotten quieter over the years, but initially, we had said you need to keep all that equipment fifteen feet away from the property line, because your neighbor likely doesn't want to have any impact from you having this new noisy machine on your property. And we do similar things for different types of elements on people's properties that deal with separation, I think today, even in our ag district, we talk about these types of accessory structures being a certain distance from property lines, I would say, whether we're talking the chicken run, or even the coop itself, might need to be either housed in a garage, or if it's a separate structure, maybe it's a certain distance from a neighbor's property line, so you're not imposing your desire of having chickens on your immediate
Would public facilities have to have approval to do chicken coops, like a school, or church?
Based on the zoning districts that are in place in the city, I'd generally say yes, they'd have to at least get some type of initial permit today, because we don't generally allow for farm animals, is how we've categorized them in our ordinance today, they're only allowed in agricultural districts, most of, like Victoria Elementary, Holy Family as two examples, that are both zoned in a residential district, so they'd have to get some kind of conditional use, or we'd have to set up the ordinance to allow for only, like, school facilities as an example, to be able to have chickens with a permit.
If I'm not mistaken, I would assume that most HOAs would probably not allow chickens, and that would probably take care of a lot of that sort of thing. I think that a lot of it comes down to, obviously, the responsibility of the owner, and I think if the surrounding neighbors are making complaints similar to a dog that's off its leash, or waste throughout the yard, stuff like that, it'd probably be handled in a similar way. But I think to Todd's point, that having some sort of language in place to, you know, control it rather than just letting it kind of free rein with, without any rules necessarily in place, is the appropriate way to move forward with it, so, I'd be, I don't think I'm gonna farm any chickens, but I'd be supportive of putting an ordinance together.
It's cool, you add language to the ordinance, talks about the material this coop, said coop is made of, so it's not obnoxiously looking? Same or similar material as existing structures in the lot, is that reasonable?
Do we have language about sheds, at all? What they have to be made of, it's sustainable construction materials?
It'd fall in the same category as anything that's in a residential lot.
So we just attach that language to it also, you know, then we're not getting these, you know, like you were saying, throw-together tin sheds or something up there, because that's probably the biggest eyesore, would be that, the structure itself.
We're getting chickens.
I think it's a good idea if the language is right, I mean, it has to be controlled with an ordinance, I mean, obviously, and I think that's being progressive with it right now, because now we're saying, okay, if we do allow chickens, here's how you have to do it, and you're... And you're, we're, we're gonna know about it and so are your neighbors. We're not gonna sneak them in and build little sheds and, you know, have it uncontrolled. You know, and leave it loose. Now, if we have an ordinance that has language, then I think that's the best way. It sounds like too much government in a way, but I, I think it could become an issue to your point where, you know, it's the loose dog thing once again. So we have to have an ordinance to control that, just like we do dogs and cats. And we license them in the city too, so.
And it will be specific to chickens, right?
Correct.
Cause we've heard that, you know, that the progression of things happens a lot.
Right.
Well.
You don't want pigeons?
Pigeons, you know, ducks.
Goats.
Eats, goats, pigs. It just starts, it, it grows.
We're just becoming an egg zone. Yeah, it is a definite change. It's not a normal pet per se.
Right.
Prescriptive language is necessary in this case.
Aaron, uh, from the other cities that do allow chickens, did you find their language in their ordinance to be adequate or something that? You know, did you have some other ideas that you would add to it or things that you would subtract from it?
Um, I know the city of Jordan does chicken bans. Where when you apply for the permit, you get little bands to put around their legs, so then you can track the chickens. Um, I think that might be a little bit cumbersome and challenging. So that's something that we could consider, but um, I I've spoken with the planner there and she said it was difficult at times.
We're having a hard enough time with our licenses for golf carts. How are we gonna license?
Right, right. And then largely the people who want chickens generally know what they're getting into. They're not seeing it just as a fun one-time thing. They generally recognize how much work they can be and how much care they take. So largely the ordinances are pretty similar. There are a few caveats, like Jordan having the chicken bans. As we've been working through the ordinances, I think we've done a really nice job of tailoring things to Victoria. So I think we will be pretty thoughtful about what it would look like here as opposed to the communities that do allow them right now. So taking some ideas from them, but tailoring it to what we're looking for.
From the cities that you've talked to, um, how many issues or complaints do they get regarding this issue?
Not very many. There have been a few rogue chickens that do escape. But generally when they do, the owners are looking for them because it's like a pet.
It's an investment too.
Yeah, yeah. And so generally the people who are interested in it are invested in it. Want to, want to keep their keep, their coop to a standard where their neighbors aren't calling the city all the time because that would become a threat of their chickens being removed. So generally, I haven't heard from people that say chickens were the worst thing that ever happened to the zoning department.
Only complaints I've ever heard is those who have roosters, which I don't believe we're gonna allow.
Right.
A little bit loud.
Yeah, I would have tended to agree with Jacob's point too, that I don't think most of the homeowners associations would allow them anyway now. And I think a lot of our houses are in associations now in Victoria. I mean, my neighborhood's one that's not, but that's because it's the oldest neighborhood there is. But uh, we don't even have alleys or, I mean, it's pretty, pretty loose up there as far as, you know, pets and everything goes and, but uh, yeah.
Yeah, is there a lot of opportunity within Victoria for chicken ownership?
Actually, in all honesty, in all the HOA docs I've read, I've never seen one restrict chickens specifically. Unless it's the town. Then you gotta restrict a whole bunch of stuff that's specific to what, how big and how many pets you can have. In all the HOA docs, I can't think of one I've seen that said no chickens.
You're gonna watch them start scrambling when this comes up.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. There's usually language on pets though in HOAs, aren't there? They're, they're in attached housing. I gotta be careful what definition it is, but in attached housing.
I'll correct you, don't worry, I'll correct you.
Specifically about how many dogs, cats, size limitations, breeding. I've never seen a neighborhood association, which is, is evolving, even the evolution of the neighborhood association in the last five years. We just don't even think about it, but now they're actually requiring full disclosure on all the neighborhood association docs with every transaction now, which is getting more interesting.
It just depends. Sometimes they do talk about farm animals, kind of like our ordinance does, depending on the age of the association. Sometimes there is language that prohibits them. Sometimes there are provisions that are abstractly worded where you still need, if it's not specifically stated, you need to get uh, association board approval. So it might vary. Why I think we just need to be cognizant of the fact that whatever provisions end up in the ordinance need to work for most general conditions.
It ends up a classic case of is it a pet or a farm animal?
Right.
Right? And we've used that term both ways today, so. The gray area start, and then a goat can be a pet or a pig can be, you know. The old circular thing.
All right, well, good chicken talk. Um, so no action is required on this tonight, but I, I think in a consensus, would we all like to see at least the council look at this, maybe staff put together, there's some language for a base ordinance and and we trust your ability to do that. Obviously you guys do a great job at that, but I mean, overall, let the, push it towards the council with, you know, an open mind anyway from the planning commission, so.
Probably look for our next step. So we'll have a draft that'll probably start here and then we'll reengage the council on where we are with that draft. Cause as Aaron noted, their direction was let's get a draft going and
Okay.
See what other things need to be thought about before it's actually adopted.
All right, very good. Any more chicken talk? Otherwise. Who thought we would've spent more time on that than the final plat?
We'd like you to bring your chicken plans next meeting, please, Mr. Trump.
I already have, I already have my coop material and everything. Believe it or not, all the material I have.
Or the directions for the dance. You better get it installed quickly before the ordinance hits.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. All right, then we'll move on to further discussion, uh, letter B, county road buffers.
So this is a, an item that came up as the council considered the new landscape and open space ordinance that was passed in May. Um, I know the planning commission in particular, we talked about those buffers several times before that final ordinance language was passed along to the council and uh, council member vote in particular had kind of paused when we got to landscaping and open space section. Um, specifically thinking about some of the county roadways, um, where in his opinion buffers weren't just kind of the landscaping areas that we had spent a lot of time on. He was really um, focused on that separation or that distance from the, the paved roadway section to a private yard. And was just curious about how those vary among the city, uh, within the city, among the various corridors. And making sure that we have the appropriate provision so that, you know, if best practice is, let's look at the area along County Road 11 next to Deer Run or Lake Town or some portion along County Road 43, that these widths of the buffers take into account um, the full distance from the edge of roadway to the private property and not just the portion of property outside of the right of way of that county roadway. And I'll explain a little bit more here. Um, so basically what he was looking at, uh, they ended up passing the landscape open space ordinance, but did ask that we spend, we as staff, spend a little bit more time just evaluating that physical separation, if you will, from county roadways to private properties along all the roads in the city. So you should have gotten as an attachment in the packet, um, an analysis Aaron did, kind of a spreadsheet that says here's the county corridor and here's kind of based upon the development, here's some average widths. And we'll go through that here in a second. So just to remind you, in the actual ordinance language, we did place buffer requirements based upon the classification or type of roadway. So you have roads such as Highway 5, Highway 7, County Road 11 that are primary corridors that have a larger width of buffer required in the new ordinance, 40 feet wide. And then we have a more dense planting requirement within that 40-foot landscape buffer. There are other arterial roadways, minor arterials such as County Road 18, 43 and a portion of uh, 13 in Bavaria that don't have quite the width, don't have quite the traffic volumes. We did end up passing, there's a 30-foot um, buffer width for those corridors. And you'll kind of see that translate here when we get into the data that Aaron put together. So if you want to pull up that attachment, if you've brought a device, um, and don't want to squint on that table, on the right is the work that Aaron put together just in general. So where council member vote was kind of seeing some concern is that if you look at all the roadways in town today that are county roads, the right-of-way widths of them varies quite widely, anywhere from 70 feet to 120 feet. So a lot of that has some historical um, significance. So the older the segment of the county road, likely the narrower the right-of-way was. Um, there was a point in time where the county uh, only was thinking of two-lane roadways out here. And obviously as growth has come out, that expectation of needing to plan to accommodate a wider roadway came about. And even then, as an example, County Road 18 between 11 and 13 is 100 feet wide. That 100 feet did not anticipate that a trail would be located within the county roadway. Fast forward five years after that to today. And now they size all new roadway acquisition, right-of-way acquisitions to 120 feet so that they can have trail on one side of their county road. So a lot of this variation has to do with just policies and kind of historical things that have evolved over time. So if we're trying to say everything should be the same, we're not probably gonna get there. But I do think it's at least a worthwhile just discussion to have of if we look at some of these roadways, and I don't disagree, obviously the busier they are, we don't necessarily want to place private property closer to those roads, particularly if they get widened. Um, but are the buffers we put in place adequate or should we take a harder look at what additional things may need to be in place depending on what's ha, going on with that adjacent county roadway? So some of the things that I would point out here, if you look at County Road 43, 18 and County Road 13, so the first two colored tables and the last colored table, the actual buffer width of the total length is pretty close to that 30 feet that we've adopted for minor arterials. County Road 11, the landscape buffer width shows at 36 feet. We had adopted 40, so again, we were pretty close there. The remaining thing, the whole distance average for all of those roadways from the edge of pavement to private property line, anywhere from 40 to 160 feet of total distance. So there's a lot going on there. And County Road 11, I think as the example, that's the largest separation we have of any of the existing developments. That's probably the roadway most likely to get widened beyond two lanes at some point in time. It might never happen, but that would be the one with the highest probability based on traffic volumes to see an increase beyond uh, two lanes. So if we start thinking about, based upon our ordinance requirement, I'd focus you on typically that pavement and shoulder section in the county roads, just a two-lane roadway is 35 to 40 feet. So the green space on either side of that roadway, from the edge of pavement to the edge of right-of-way, 17 and a half to 40 feet wide. If you add that to the 30-foot buffer requirement we have, we're somewhere in that 50 to 60 feet in width. If we're looking at County Road 11 with, or Highway 5, we're looking at green space of probably 40 feet and then we're adding another 40 feet onto there. So we got 80 feet of separation on those roadways. Some cases, what we have is a result of a lot of property-specific conditions, like Lake Town, we talked about this when we did, went through the ordinance. It, the property of Lake Town, First Edition through Eighth Edition sits quite a bit higher from the road than a lot of other roadways in town. So they increased that separation more because they couldn't put houses on a dramatic slope. So we in, we inherited more property along that roadway than some other places. Might be easier if you have a visual.
We, we just approved this plat in South Wasserman.
Mm-hmm.
And looking at some of the dimensions we're talking about, there's eight or 10 more lots or 20 more lots coming in that undeveloped space. Does this new buffer prohibit that from happening?
The buffer would have to be before the, the lots or incorporated into those lots. So you can kind of see what I'm talking about in terms of existing conditions that created larger expanses of property between the physical road of County Road 11 and some of the private homes here. Or if you just compare this part of Lake Town to this part of Lake Town, there's a lot more natural vegetation, a lot more hill line slope. There was a, a wetland and some pooling that impacted kind of an outfall from that area. So that was a condition that was there. If we look at the data that Aaron put together related to County Road 43, the one asterix or the caveat that we don't have on there that increased that physical separation is there's a gas line easement that runs along the north side of Church Lake Boulevard. So in some ways, we almost have an artificial expectation of what that separation should be. Because there were other factors that went into pushing those homes further away from the roadway. Cause you can see as you come around the bend where that, that easement jogs north, heads towards Lake Bridge, that physical separation from Church Lake Boulevard to some of those homes decreases. I don't know that I'm looking for you to pinpoint tonight, here's what we should be or we just agree with the ordinance, but at, at least wanted to get some kind of initial reaction in reviewing some of this data now on just any initial thoughts for, do we think that we have enough separation in place with this new buffer standard? Is there some other information you like to see um, provided maybe a little bit different?
One thing that pops into my head is are constructed berms additional feet? So let's just say that, and the, the new development's gonna go in and it's straight line, it's 100 feet. But they decide to put a hill in there and you're going up and down, do those, do those feet, excuse me, do those feet count?
Um, I'm gonna break down that because it's actually a little bit more complicated than just that question. So in addition to just the trees that we require in that buffer width, we also acquire an eight-foot tall berm. Well, an eight-foot tall berm in 30 feet at a three-to-one or a four-to-one slope isn't necessarily possible. So we built into the ordinance that that buffer might naturally get a little bit bigger if it's a flat piece of ground from the roadway and they have to build an eight-foot tall berm. We've widened that distance. If we get into conditions where the, the existing land, like I was describing with Lake Town, is already at a place where it has eight feet or more of separation, they've already got that berm built in. So in some cases, you might already be up this high because you're not at a three, you're not a, at a three-to-one or a gradual slope, you're at a more dramatic slope. So you can do all your landscaping in that designated buffer width and be fine. So there's a lot of variables just based upon the existing conditions of the land. But Birmingham certainly has the ability to widen that requirement if you're dealing with just basically a flat piece of ground. So the development tonight that we looked at, they are on, off of Marsh Lake Road, that requires a 40-foot buffer. You add the eight-foot tall berm in there, it's actually 42 feet of land area that's taken up to accomplish that eight-foot tall buffer. Based upon the slopes that they designed that berm at.
And that, that slope was designed, that was our idea, three-to-one.
And that that slope was designed, that was our idea, three to one as a maximum slope to. Permit maybe a better landscaping process and not such a extreme.
Depending on the aesthetic, so what we've what we typically have done. As development comes in, if it's going to be more natural berm, like what you'd see in Cheval or even what this picture starts to articulate where it's not. Mode regularly, they could do a three to one, maybe even a two to one, cause it's not. Need to get a piece of equipment on that hillside. Um if it is gonna be mode, so things like along County Road eighteen or forty-three, some of the more manicured buffer areas. Those need to be at a maximum of three to one slope, cause most of the time, even a riding lawnmower isn't gonna navigate anything steeper than that.
So does the county, with the county roads being the concern here, what's posted? Does the county make suggestions on buffers, or do I mean they they're gonna list you the right away?
They don't, they typically just look at what's the closest any structure is allowed to be to the roadway.
To the edge.
A lot of our setback requirements are things that they wanna hear about when we deal with these, so. Having those buffers in place actually helps meet their objective of they generally don't wanna see a home within fifty feet. Of a right away line.
Of the right away line, yeah.
Correct.
That allows them the expansion, they they might be necessary in the future.
Correct. I definitely understand this is a more complicated set of questions to think through. Um is all you're looking at is data and like I said, in some cases, we've been spoiled a little bit. Because we have this view of larger right aways that. Ended up either Cheval was part of a planned unit development discussion. That was just a theme that they had for their project is they wanted these larger burms created to kind of insulate. That project from all the all the adjacent roadways, county, local, whatever, that was an aesthetic. And as I mentioned before, this um most of the time, if you're driving from County Road eleven down forty-three and you go past water mark. You can see those homes sit back quite a ways from the road, well, part of it is because of the right away the county road, the other part is there's a fifty foot wide. Gas main easement and then you've got the buffer, so there was quite a bit of land preserved. Just adding in all the rules, so to speak, to make sure everything was being accommodated.
So council member vote concerned, eh I mean, did he have something specific in mind as far as development goes that he's seen?
He really just wasn't convinced when he saw um widths of thirty and forty feet that that was. That was preserving the natural aesthetic that we have today. And based upon now having a more detailed level of information along all the county roads, I would say. In general, from what we'll get in green space within the right away and you add on our buffer requirement. We might be a little light in some cases, there's certainly a number of examples that have less than what we have, there are some that are about the same. But there are some areas where we just ended up with conditions where those. Physical separations from roadway to private property ended up being larger, quite a bit larger.
And and I think it, when I think of it, I think of an average myself, you know, I don't, it's gonna vary with the landscape and. Topography, I don't wanna just, I don't want everything the same along the road either, cause the topography is what makes this city unique in the first place. So if we have a variable in there, but too close is never good, obviously, but and there are some tight numbers in here, but.
I think our new ordinance takes care of all the ones that are too close, looking at what's too close, is that safe to say?
Yes, I would say definitely just for what we have in place, we're exceeding the minimums that you'd see just. Existing condition today, so we're not in that condition. The question is, do we have enough?
Especially the newer developments, that seems like we've done a good job with that.
Correct.
If I'm reading this right, I'm understanding it properly, a new ordinance would basically exceed every average except County Road forty-three.
Correct.
Do we need to make it any larger?
Well, part of it, so if you look at just this column here, that's the pavement to property line, let me break this down a little bit, so if you look at. This eighty-six number, of that eighty-six, forty-three of it is the buffer we already have and let's just average. And maybe twenty feet of it is in the right away, so there is a difference of maybe another twenty feet. That's not accounted for in our current ordinance. Because the right away is not taking care of that green space and our ordinance is less than trying to replicate this eighty-six feet of distance.
Does our ordinance call for thirty to forty feet from the pavement line or from the right away line?
From the right away line.
So you're trying, think of a hurting properly bent, so that using that average of eighty-six. Pavement, there'd be another twenty feet in top, take twenty feet away from that or add to that. So forty-three is at the actual buffer outside the right of lane, the vegetated buffer average?
This forty-three is out of the eighty-six, so the total space, the total eighty-six feet, forty-three of it. Is taken up by that vegetated buffer. The other forty-three feet is within the right away or in an outlot.
So it's. We got a pavement line, we got a right away line, then we get the vegetated buffer line, but sometimes there's some space in between we're not accounting for in our current.
Correct. See if this will open up quickly, cause I can show you a really good example of that.
Thank you.
So if we looked at this property as an example, and I'll show you just next to it here in a minute. So the county roadway is this line here, this black line to that black line. Total right away width here is about a hundred feet. We have a ten foot outlot that the city owns, that was for the trail, cause previous county policy when this roadway was established. As trails had to be outside of the county roadway, okay?
Out of the right away.
Correct, and we didn't want the trail to be on private property, cause it's a public trail. So then within the lot itself, here's where that gas easement is, so you've got this fifty foot swath of green space. That nothing was supposed to be in, then you've got their landscape buffer. And then you've got basically the the unobstructed or unencumbered lot area of that property. So if we go over here and again, if all we're trying to measure is distance from the right away, the right away stayed the same, it's a hundred feet wide. The trail's in an outlot, but in in this outlot, we also ended up with the low point of the developments, so all their stormwater ponds ended up going in here. So that width probably greater than fifty feet got to private property. So that's why some of our averages are higher. Yeah, so if you look across the road. Same road, so same hundred feet, the calculation on this side of the road's gonna be different from distance to edge of pavement to property. There's a pretty significant berm in here, but this was an outlot, so the outlots wider than just that vegetated buffer. So there's more green space than just the vegetated buffer when you get past the right away.
How wide is that outlot roughly?
I wanna say it's, I'm gonna be wrong, I wanna say it's closer to forty feet.
That would resemble our current ordinance today.
It'd be close.
My current ordinance calls for exactly how many feet?
Depending on the type of roadway, it's thirty or forty feet.
I don't know that we need that anymore, do you, what do you guys think? I'm missing something, I'm trying to get a better grasp.
Yeah, it's fine, this isn't like a trick question, so to speak, it's not, you're right or wrong.
What I'm thinking is where are you gonna get the land from, you know what I mean, are we gonna shrink lots or, you know what I mean? Basically, that's what we're gonna end up doing, cause the right away is established already, all we're gonna do is shrink the backyards on the on the people.
Or have less lots overall in the development, so. There's a lot of ways to accomplish it, if we set the standard and we need a little bit more, people do adapt. Not saying that we can't provide for a larger buffer areas. Um but yeah, I really just wanted to get a sense for, we did spend quite a bit of time on it, now being presented it with a different. View set where we're talking about that physical separation from roadway to lot line instead of just what's that buffer area? Or what has that buffer area been, it is a slightly different question.
I think with the width we have currently established with the grading rules that go with that and the vegetation rules that go with that, I don't know that we really need to. That's our decision, but I don't know what I would change.
I I agree with that, I think the vegetation rule is more important than how wide that buffer really is, you know, with the number we have, cause. The picture you were just showing was, that's pretty sparse vegetation on top of that buffer, I'd rather see that filled. You know, for the everything, cause that gives you a natural separation, no matter how wide it is. You don't know that's forty feet or fifty feet when it's filled with green. It could be ten feet as far as you're concerned, cause you're concerned up to the face that you're looking at of the green space of the greenery, you know.
It's all aesthetics, right?
Basically an aesthetic.
Well, and some function, I mean to you to Todd's point, loud noise gets muffled a little bit, the denser that vegetation is. Or you add a berm, you're putting some barriers in between you and traffic, so that noise volume gets muffled a little bit if you're one of the adjacent owners.
But to the question of what's it gonna do yards, right? Smaller yards mean less value, right, typically, I mean, you know that better than I do, but. I mean, if you're gonna look, if you're gonna start talking about the value part of it, right? If if you make changes, it would only, eh at least in my mind, it would be a reduction in value. Because you're getting less property if you start moving in first. And and is that something you really wanna do, and again, it's just supporting the points that have already been made, right, about why change it?
We're taking this land or this capital away from some developer, farmer, landowner, by widening this thing, I like Todd's idea of. Let's increase the density, let's make less more, let's take lesser piece of land, make it more efficient.
And if that homeowner doesn't think that's enough, they can always add too, you know, and they can, if they can grow their own buffer. Themself naturally, you know, with whatever they want. I mean, if you have the yard to do it, but if you don't, then. Yeah, there's a value that's based on that too, you know. You wanna be known for the city with decent sized lots or big buffer areas, you know, and then. The maintenance of them and upkeep of all that buffer area too becomes another issue if it comes to mowing or not mowing and.
I give you guys enough to work with?
Think we'll have another conversation with council member vote and. Outline some of the discussion that happened here. Yeah, if if we would have presented this and you all would have said, yeah, we should take a harder look at more space, great, we'd do that. Sounds like at least right now with all the different variables in place, we're pretty comfortable with what we've put in place. Maybe if anything, there's more consideration or maybe evaluation as these new buffer requirements get implemented. To look at, is that vegetation right, if you look at the example tonight, that forty foot. Buffer with all the planting requirements is a pretty dense buffer.
And it's it's a varied mix too, so we're getting year round greens in there, that was kind of our point of.
So if I am smart and figure out how to zoom in on this. He doesn't like me, I went too hard and too fast.
A little further.
It's really slow. I'm not gonna play with this too much, just let it go wherever it goes here. But basically, so if we're looking at a forty foot swath from this dash line to this dash line. There's quite a bit of vegetation in there. The one thing our park and rec director saw when this came in, originally contemplated needing to put a fence in until we saw this landscape buffer. And I don't know that there's gonna be a need between the berm and the landscaping in here. For anyone to be able to walk through that very easily. So at least for the forty foot, having now seen it implemented, I'm still really confident that this is the level of. Tree density that we're looking for. As we get some of those thirty foot, so we have a hill point will come forward, maybe the next couple meetings. That has a thirty foot buffer, you'll see what that looks like. So.
And the we discussed low growth, high growth, mid growth too, that were all ranges going up. It's just not all forty foot trees with trunks.
Correct.
I think we we've hammered that all pretty good, I thought.
In the discussion, was there a lot of, was there a lot of discussion around the economics of it?
Which discussion, the discussion that.
Yeah.
Um not so much, it was purely more of an aesthetic thing. Just a concern not feeling like you're driving down the road and you're also driving through someone's backyard. Was more or less the the primary concern.
And I I could see it from the homeowner's point, if you feel like the people are driving through your backyard as opposed to the person using the road.
The one example that council member vote brought up was Applewood. And I think if you were just to look straight on as you're driving by, this is really slow. The tree density is actually not bad, but I think it was more the as you drive by, it does appear like. And this was a narrower county roadway corridor, so this is only eighty feet wide.
That's County Road thirteen. So that is one of our lower ones, you know, pavement property, yeah.
But this isn't a thirty foot wide buffer. And it is a narrower right away than some others in the city. Just because, but.
That might be on the low end of our examples too, so.
Correct, but this was the one that stuck out to him where he was wanting to make sure, let's not do that again. Cause you literally see like the houses fairly close to the road.
And in today's ordinance, could you do that?
It wouldn't be enough. The tree tree density might be good, but the width of that buffer area isn't isn't as wide as we would require today.
And that right away is.
Is narrow.
Is narrow, so, or we'd be adding it on both ends in that case, so. So that being the extreme, I I get his point, but I. Realistically, it's not something that's really gonna be practical in the future for us to approve.
I think you already addressed it with the ordinance.
Okay, alright.
Any other thoughts on that, guys, I mean?
No, I think what we have is adequate.
Yeah, it seems to be anyway, so. You know, and then the the other part of it is, if it's not, we're eh we're gonna hear about it, you're gonna have traffic complaint, noise complaints. All that, then then we may have to go back to, well, hey, man, this, we've filled these with trees and every type there is and they're still complaining. That's usually a sign that traffic flow is going up also though.
Right.
And uses, time of uses has gone up, which which can happen on all these county roads, obviously.
Correct.
Alright.
So thank you.
Alright, that was a good discussion there, so we got that cleared up, um anything else need to be said on that, otherwise we can move on to number five, uh council meeting updates?
A few quick things, uh council or council member, uh Commissioner Krikis was at the meeting last night. Um wasn't able to come tonight, his daughter's birthday, but did um contact me and thought that some of the discussion. Um that council had last night relating to Steiger Lake Lane, so staff has been going through preliminary design. um, that council had last night relating to Steiger Lake Lane, so staff has been going through preliminary design for the portion of Steiger Lake Lane just east of City Hall out to Highway five. Trying to evaluate how much parking could go on to that roadway within today's right of way. So our consultant, uh, came back with a couple different exhibits. I'll just show you the ultimate build out exhibit that they provided. So right here, you can see the current parking lot on the east side of City Hall. So from the Victoria Flats project, uh, just across the street, fifteen, uh, parallel parking spaces and then an additional, uh, eleven, eighteen and twenty-four diagonal extending down and adjacent to the new Inky location. Could go in along with a sidewalk, basically connecting the entire downtown area now out towards Anky with a connection across the street, sorry, over here to the trail. So this is the, the entrance into the old public works site is where the cursor is right here, just to orient you. Um, a lot of discussion we had, so the initial plan was to figure out how many parking spaces fit on the south side of the roadway cause that's where we have right of way today. Reconstruct the roadway, cause it's a need of doing that and leaving the north side generally as untouched, so we wouldn't be adding any parking on that side because all of those parcels east of City Hall do have the potential for redevelopment. And we don't necessarily wanna lock someone in to either an access location or, you know, we're showing parallel parking on the north side here, depending on what the user ends up being. They may prefer, prefer foregoing, providing additional right of way to make those diagonal parking spaces so that their parking count is increased and they don't maybe have to do an off-street parking lot to accommodate whatever their end use needs are. So that's at least generally where we are with that, uh, project. Does add an additional sixty-eight parking stalls, just the south side, uh, to the overall mix of downtown. So a lot of the comments that we continue to have, particularly as we get special events, um, or just busy weekends, just having additional capacity that's in a reasonable walking distance of some of the core areas around downtown was initially why we were looking at pursuing this. Plus, um, the money for this coming from the, uh, TIF district that was created for the apartment project across the street. Uh, we ended up going from thirty-seven spaces in the lot that was in place before the building started. When it's completed, we'll have fifty-three public parking spaces just within and adjacent to that site, so add another sixty-eight to that. Um, we've more than tripled the amount of parking, uh, that the city previously had before that project started, so. A lot of those goals being met here, uh, in terms of bang for the buck, the council also before authorizing preliminary design had talked about, do we go tackle this because we already own the property and we can deliver parking? Do we need to consider what a ramp might look like to put downtown? The best bang for the buck ultimately in delivering really easy parking spaces that are still accept accessible to the majority of downtown was ultimately this project.
Does this serve to current commerce well though compared to where ramp might serve commerce?
Uh, just depends on what's the scope and magnitude of that ramp. So, part of, part of what we had talked about was if we were to take just the middle lot that the city currently owns behind Vicks and Victoria House and turn that into a ramp, just that parcel. We really can only double the amount of parking stalls there, so today there's like forty-two. I think we get a total of like eighty in a scissors ramp with that property, but the cost there was about like one point two, one point five million dollars whereas we're spending up to maybe one point two for a significant amount more parking spaces.
If we spent one point two on a scissors ramp, would that not entice hopefully occupancy of our vacant grocery store and other commerce that might be down there?
Maybe. Depending on, from the things that I've heard, it's not just the additional parking capacity that's needed. It's, it's, it's in close proximity to the building that's needed. And there might be an additional property that needs to be acquired to remove a physical barrier, visual barrier between the grocery site and the parking lot.
Has there, has there been any discussion with Southwest Metro Transit to come and build a ramp? And you said as kind of a transit post, you know, Carver, Chaska, Chanhasan has that.
We've actually just started having conversations with Southwest and the council um, about mostly their prime service, so if you look through, it's actually a really good topic to bring up. We did go through some of the, uh, preliminary budget for next year, and as part of that, they wanted to accommodate kind of a trial period of offering the prime service in Victoria next year. Um, at a staff level, yes, we've talked with Southwest Transit about what would it mean to, one, we'd have to join Southwest Transit to get a ramp. I think they're open to this prime service similar to what they've done as a trial period with Carver where it was just a surface lot, not a ramp. Where you'd have some capacity to see what that interaction and demand is for Victoria residents. At a minimum, they'd wanna build a three hundred stall parking ramp is generally where they've been in kinda Chaska, Chanhasan and Eden Prairie. That's a lot of land, depending on how many levels or height you want that ramp to be. So something certainly we continue to talk with them about. And I know the council's still trying to figure out what's the right move for the community, given where we've been with demand for those services.
I see one benefit to this type of parking too, it's, it's gonna make that property that's altered now more valuable, first of all. And maybe spur some development of those older buildings and, uh, more retail or whatever it be. Um, as long as, I mean, for sure, it's gonna be handicapped accessible and we're gonna have parking and, you know, winter, not so much walking from end to end, but it ties Inky in, even though they have a parking lot, but the other properties. I mean, even if this is the first step. Uh, towards it, and then in the future with Southwest, you know, with the ramp and everything. I think it's a good start, cause that's the only thing I constantly hear from my neighbors' words, is everyone gonna park. They still think that we took parking spots away with this development. Come to a meeting and figure it out, you know? We've, we're actually adding spots, but they just can't believe it, but this would definitely help. And I think it'd even calm the traffic that comes down that road, cause they should travel at high speed down that road.
Well, the plan right now, obviously, we haven't gotten into full cost estimate, is that we expand some of the ornamental lighting. We take some of the tree boxes that are adjacent to the sidewalk down that roadway, so we kinda tie it in so that that area of Steiger feels a lot like what we have in the central part of downtown.
That makes sense.
So with this addition, would they remove the parking from the downtown area in front of?
The temporary.
Just a great segue. So one of the other things that we asked, the council asked us to look at, certainly the one way in its configuration today with the diagonal, it's too tight. Doesn't work. So one of the things they wanted us to look at is, what does a permanent solution look like? Do we have the adequate width with parallel parking? It's a high pedestrian area, so how do we make that interaction better? So what's on here? In total is about thirteen parking spaces, um, all parallel. The bump outs in orange that you see are those pedestrian crossings that are there today. We haven't figured out exactly, are all of those raised entirely, all the way out to the through lane? Or are they at grade but just a designated pedestrian zone? So that you can walk up to that edge, look to make sure a car's not crossing and then just finish the one lane crossing there. The other thing that's come up, we've had some residents that have been concerned about the way that the existing parking, uh, obstructs some of the views when you're sitting outside in the summer of the lake or if something's going on in the ban shell. So part of the conversation last night with council was, do these two spaces, does this width, does that adequately accommodate some of the food truck, truck deliveries to both Victoria House and Vicks that currently sit in the middle of roadways in the morning and afternoon? When those are happening, could it be more of a loading zone that is only used maybe fifteen, twenty minutes at a time? And then it's really for the majority of the day, it's just left open. That's one of the things that they started to feel a little bit more com- comfortable, comfortable about. Um, but in general, looking, uh, they were more interested last night in continuing to explore the idea of making this a higher pedestrian area. They're not opposed to keeping it a one-way, but what could be done to keep it just more of a pedestrian focus? Keep the views open for downtown. Like the idea of the one-way has done a great job in calming traffic speeds. Uh, as our city engineer noted, uh, probably a year ago now was the first time that we implemented the three-way stop at Quamoclet and Steger. Even after putting up stop signs on both sides and flags on the stop signs, we'd constantly see people that had been down the roadway that were just blowing through the stop sign. Once we added the on-street parking and people that were coming from the east heading west, had to turn, see a lot more control at that intersection. Uh, so it certainly feels safer, particularly with the amount of kids that we see at the ice cream shop over the summer months. So generally, it looks like we'll be looking at some type of solution. This probably isn't the final version that will get, uh, taken for council, but what they expressed last night is look at it a little bit more with the consultant, come back with a solution. They'll make a final selection before any final design is moved forward with on whether that one-way remains as more of a permanent solution or not.
Has there been any discussion or consideration of from, from the Vicks to Victoria House, just closing that off as a pedestrian? Well, I mean, from my experience, kids are running across, they're climbing those rocks, when they're done eating supper, they run to the ice cream shop across there without even looking. I, I mean, that, I think that would really add to the aesthetics of the downtown area.
Just a plaza type area.
We haven't had that specific conversation. A lot of them still, I mean, even for that food truck is the thing that would probably have the biggest bearing for them, because right now it comes down the alley, sits on the alley next to Victoria House, then pulls around the corner and then sits on Quamoclet to unload for, um, Vicks. So they still use basically that through movement. The parking area that's right here is quite a bit steeper, so turning on even to sit in that through aisle of the parking lot is probably gonna be too challenging for them, so figuring out where else can they get a close proximity of food delivery adjacent to the, to their properties. But it's definitely, that's why I think a lot of their comments last night were, how do we make it even more pedestrian friendly than what this graphic currently shows?
And you know, is, we're here to really make this for the residents of the, the city make it easier for them to get around and worrying about a food delivery truck is, should be real low on our concern. Um, they have smaller trucks, they can make two deliveries a week instead of one. There's many ways around that, that, that part of the system as far as restauranting, that's adjustable. But to get our people down there and have them safe, like you was mentioning, that is huge to me. Cause I agree, I, the kids, when, when there's an event going on or, you know, even after dinner, when they run across that street, I'm just every time I see it, you know, and I think part of public safety, that's number one. And I, I know we have a concern for the restaurant owners, one's, one of my good friends, you know, but once again, three deliveries that week in small trucks or however it has to be done, they'll make the adjustment to it. Uh, they do it downtown Minneapolis all the time, you know, a lot of small trucks, so. I, I love that suggestion. I've talked to my neighbors about that too. They'd love to see something like that, an open plaza down there where you didn't have to worry about traffic. Good suggestion, Ben, overall.
I think this is why Commissioner Krikis said, you should talk about this. So I would say that was probably the biggest thing on the agenda last night that I'd say would, should be on the radar of this group in terms of how it impacts development that might be hap- happening. As a related note, we've now got, received an application for the expansion of the Creamery Building. So we'll be getting into talking about parking again. I would guess probably maybe the first or second meeting in September is when you'll see that project. Like I said, I think we just got it last Friday, so still doing review to make sure that we're checking all the boxes on what our ordinance requirements are related to what's submitted, but that project should be ready for this commission to take a look at uh, here in the near future.
Can you discuss the use?
Uh, first floor restaurant, second floor proposes office.
Same building, new building?
Uh, the existing building stays, there's an addition to the first floor to expand it.
Very nice.
Any other questions?
I guess not specific to the council meetings, but if, if we're done with council meeting stuff miscellaneous, we could slide into. Just curious, some of the neighbors were asking up at, uh, Lyons Park, the shelter, there's, it looks like you're cutting drain tile or some type of drainage in that little land up there. There's a trench that was cut all the way behind the fence from going north to south.
From going north to south?
Yeah, behind, next to, uh, Bethesda, the homes there. Right through there.
Yep, so there has been a low area here for a long time, so yes, Public Works did, uh, install a drain tile basically just to pick up any of the excess water and get it to the storm sewer. That, that would really was the extent of that.
So they have a storm sewer location over here behind the fence somewhere, is that? Cause that was part of the concern with the expansion, if we did put a parking lot in, all that work would had to have been done and. People thought it was part of the shelter improvement and I told them, no, that's not in our scope, so.
I think as Ann Monkey, our Parks and Public Works Director, uh, noted, they're tired of taking mowers through it when it was basically a little too wet for any of the mowers to get through it.
That's where the playground equipment used to be originally, in the horse chute pits, and it was always underwater, always.
No, I think in terms of the shelter project itself, we just received the demo permit today. I don't know when they're slated to start that, but it's probably gonna be in the next couple weeks.
Yeah, we got a few things to do. Uh, Poppets was gonna do the demo for. Crew and, um. We got a few things to get out of there and move and stuff too, so. Okay, that's, that answers that, thank you, so I can give them a truthful answer instead of making something up. They, they seem to naturally just come to me, cause I live on that neighborhood, you know, three houses away. They know, well, he's, he'll know everything. No, I don't. I see the hole too, I was wondering what it was myself. That's what I assumed it was though, so. Very good. Anything else miscellaneous from missionaries or then or anything else?
I just plan for that next meeting in September. I'm guessing if it's not ordinance, um, drafts to review as a group, we might have that Creamery project, potentially Hill Point, uh, Final Platte. Both of those still have potential that they could be on that agenda, but either way, we'd plan to have that meeting in, uh, September.
That's a date, isn't it?
So has the adjustment with the new building official? I mean, everything falling into place now and getting a system down? I mean, that's.
Got a whole week under his belt, so. Sure he knows everything.
Yeah, well, he's been doing it for a while too, so he just adjusts into the quirks of a new city, so. That's good. Yeah, he's good to work with. I haven't met him at other meetings before, so I think we picked up a good person for the city, so. Anything else miscellaneous? Well, number seven is the adjournment. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, John? All in favor? So has it. Thank you.